Maybe they went down here.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 17th, 2017 zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing. We've got a few items on the agenda tonight. Before we get into that, we do have, recognize that we have our building commissioner here, and he was here on a case, but that's getting continued. But I also wanted just to update the board on the recent bylaw that was passed at town meeting, not particular to any case, but just so we know going forward. I figured he was here anyway, so wasn't expected, but go ahead.
You can hear me, right? Yeah, Article 31, obviously you may have some questions about it. It's, obviously hasn't gone to Attorney General yet, but it really doesn't have to. The Article 31 was actually, the particular piece that actually went through was written by me, and it was part of the planning board had put forth Article 31 as a way to connect 6C4, which is multiple buildings on a lot, with 5B. And the way they originally proposed it, there was a little bit of conflict, so it was rewritten and finally passed before the board. I don't know whether you've read it, each one of you have read it yet. If you haven't, then obviously you may not have questions yet. But if you have any tonight, obviously, I'm already here if you want to ask.
So it was basically just set the limit on the square footage for per unit, right?
Right. I mean, yes, but it also connects 5B with 6C4 so that you can also use the buffer zone, et cetera, et cetera. And what it does from my standpoint is allows me, when the application comes forward, to scrutinize it before it goes to the board, because currently on the 6C4, if they come to me and say, hey, I want to do this, I can't scrutinize it at all. I just send it to you, and that's it. Just gives me a little bit of latitude as well. And then that way, it also helps the board, because you can use anything under five now that you couldn't before, so.
And it allows you then to, you know, to look at that application before it comes to us under the guideline of 5B.
Correct. And then, you know, the zoning Board of Appeals has the right to condition anything as they see fit anyway, so. But it just gives you a little more latitude, because especially if a case is appealed, you have a little more, something a little more rock solid to grab onto.
Yeah. We've had a lot of those principal buildings on the same lot over the last year. It just seems like all of a sudden they popped up, so.
And I'm expecting more.
Hopefully this provides some clarification, although my sense is from, there was a long discussion at town meeting on this one. It's a little different than where it started, so.
Oh, really? Right. And obviously, it's not, it didn't scrutinize every bit of it. And again, it was basically put forth before town, town meeting, four days before the warrant closed. So I never saw it until after the warrant already closed. So, and one thing I'm very high on is I don't like parts of any bylaw conflicting with another piece. And that's why the, when it was first brought forth, it was 15,000 square feet was actually talked about, and, which would actually contradict five, which is all 10,000. So we kind of clarified that and changed it. So, but, I mean, again, it should give the board a little more latitude. Definitely gives me a little bit of latitude, and then we'll go from there.
So would you say that it has the effect that whether there are multifamily in a single building, or whether it's multiple families on a lot in separate buildings, that the dimensional, the five, Section 5 is the same?
Well, yeah. I mean, the dimensional end of it's 10,000 across the board, under five. There's no change, you know, there's no actual change to that. What it did was actually just connect the two, because before, Section 5 only talked about one building, one lot. That's all Section 5 did. Session 6C4 was obviously multiple buildings on one lot. So it connects the two. We're now talking about multiple buildings on one lot. And under five, as you probably already know, a special permit is required for whether it's a two-family, three-family, four-family, et cetera. And this was connected directly to the four units per building specifically, because that was a way to make that first connection. But the board has a discretion now, as far as two families and three families, to obviously put the same conditions on if they so deem.
Interesting. So two buildings would be the same as four families in a single building? Is that what you just said?
Two, two families?
I'll put it this way. If currently, under 5B13D, which talks about four units in one building, this now allows to have multiple buildings with four in it, but they would have to have a 50-foot buffer, it has to be connected to soar, all of that, before it even gets to the board, they have to show that to me. They have to show that it all applies before, to even get to the special permit application. As far as two and three go, again, you have multiple buildings on a lot. Well, let's talk about two families. Let's say you have eight two-family buildings on it, okay? Again, because there's a connection now, you have the, you always actually had the, you could condition something to 50-foot buffer, 100-foot, whatever you, you could condition all day long. But what this actually does is keep the appeal process a little harder. It's harder for somebody to appeal your decision, because now there's a connection between the two.
I'm sure we'll see, I'm sure we'll see more, you know.
You probably will.
We'll see how the new bylaw has any impact on it, so.
So in terms of its application, though, to matters that are pending before us?
We want to talk about matters that are pending, so.
No, I know, but the, any change in a zoning bylaw would apply to, you know, I believe it's, you know, as of the date of the first publication of a public hearing.
We have a memo from town council on the subject, that when we get to a hearing that involves it, we'll delve into the nuances of it. Because it was actually, it was insightful, that aspect of mass general law, and when do special permits versus variance. I think there's a, and again, some of it was news to me.
There is a difference.
But I didn't know that, but we'll get, you know, I don't, you know, it's a subject for another day, but we do have, it is an interesting topic on these cases, when, you know, my assumption was what your assumption was, but I guess that's not always the case, in terms of when you file, and when it, when it's first advertised, and which is done first, so. But, you know, I still think there's, I still think there's questions around 6C4.
Absolutely.
And I hope that, I think they may have answered some, but unfortunately, I think they couldn't get probably all the way where you wanted it to be.
Right. I mean, it was done so quickly, you couldn't hash it all out at one shot.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, at this point, I mean, as far as I know, it doesn't directly affect any current application. So, but stuff that I know may be coming forward, it definitely, so.
All right. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. A couple of housekeeping items on some cases that we have tonight. One of them is, it is case number 23-16, application from Wall Street Development Company. We had it on as a continuation tonight. We have a letter from Lou Patrosi, President of Wall Street, that, "It's my understanding the board has yet to receive the requested legal opinion from town council. Please accept this letter as a formal request to continue the public hearing for the project until June 7th, 2017, 7:00 p.m., and extend the time for the board to render a decision until June 30th, 2017. Any revised plans will be submitted for review at least two weeks prior to the date of the rescheduled hearing." So.
We have a request out to town council?
We've had a request out to town council. It is a, it's very busy season for town council with all town meetings and everything. She apologized that she couldn't get to it, but wanted to give it her full attention. So she's, you know, I thought it would be, I almost thought I'd have it today, and I would have told him.
No, no, no. I just hadn't recalled our request.
Yeah, we actually requested it like the day after we had that last hearing, or that week after, right, something like that. And she's just, it's just been, as most attorneys know, do municipal work, town meeting to time is a busy time, so. Not rushing her, I figured, you know, let's get the best response, so. I'm sure we'll have it for the next one, so.
And this is special permit, so we don't have an issue on timing?
Well, they gave us to the, I mean, right, it's just a special permit, right? There's no variance here, yeah. So we don't even have to extend the time to render, just they put it in the letter.
Oh, they put it in the letter?
Yeah.
Are we going to vote to accept it? There's something for me to sign, then?
Yeah, well, I mean, we just give them their continuation to June 7th.
And we can ignore the extension, right?
Just special permit under 6C4A.
Both under.
Yeah. All right. Well, I guess I'll make a motion on behalf of the applicant, Wall Street Development Corp., to accept their request to continue the public hearing until June 7th, 2017, 7:00 p.m. in this room.
Second.
All in favor? Our next housekeeping item, we have, we actually have, we have a, it's a new case, so. Open it and just continue. So we have, our next case is an application from Peter and Lee and Fatalo, case number 11-17, with respect to the property located at 4 Hummingburn Lane, Walpole, Mass., Assessor, MAP 25, 35-15, zoning district Residence B. It's an application for a variance under Section 6B to allow a detached accessory structure with the front yard setback of 8.1 feet where 30 feet is required. Now that we have opened the hearing, they could not make it tonight, and have requested, we have a letter from Dan Merrick, and on behalf of the applicant, we request the board, continue the May 17 hearing without discussion until your next meeting on June 7th. The applicant cannot be present on May 17, so. Next time, maybe they'll tell us when we give them the time, and we schedule them for the, because the clock, either way, it was ticking to open it, and it was ticking to now close it, so.
Well, can we ask, is there anybody, we don't want to hear about the subject, but is there anybody here concerned or interested in this case?
No.
None noted?
Yeah.
And we, how's our agenda on the sixth, seventh? We good?
We have Burns, which is going to take a while.
Burns, we just did, yep.
I think we have another, don't we have another one that came in for the seventh?
We have Oak Street.
Yeah.
Now Hummingburn, now Burns.
Oak Street, Hummingburn.
Oh, is that, all right, that's fine. Then that's, yeah.
No more than for that.
All right, so I guess, any other questions on that one? Yeah. I'll make a motion on behalf of the applicant, Peter and Lee and Fatalo, to accept their request for continuation until June 7th, 2017, 7:00 p.m. in this room.
Second.
All right. All in favor? All right. Our next matter is a new application from Timothy Spear and Teresa Vanderboom, case number 10-17, with respect to the property located at 12 Mohawk Circle, Walpole, Mass., zoning district RB. It's an application for a variance under Section 6B of the zoning bylaw for front yard setback of 27 feet instead of 30 feet to allow for the construction of a front porch. Come on up. They say, come on down. All right. Name and address, and then your.
Good evening. Timothy Spear, 12 Mohawk Circle, Walpole. So what we would like to do is build a front porch in front of our house. We looked at a number of ways to get some more space, and building up would have required a height variance, and building back was not possible because of the proximity to the property line. So building a front porch gives us the ability to extend our family room a little bit as well to match that, and create some space in our family room, and also build a front porch that we think will look very nice at the end of the street. We don't have a sidewalk on our, on our property. We're at the end of the cul-de-sac.
All right. So there was a plan in the file. Was this, was this done by Colonial Engineering?
Yes.
And the Reds and the Blues, that was, they did that?
Yes.
Okay. Our board engineer isn't here tonight, but I know, and I think I saw it on the letter from the town engineer, that we want to make sure that plan was stamped by the engineer at some point. Oftentimes, we have, sometimes people have someone, when somebody does the survey, and then someone else does something. So we just want to make sure we have the plan stamped by the engineer. But just the first thing. So your front porch, you're looking for a three-foot variance on?
Yes.
Okay. So as you know, when you did the application, you know, the variance bar is pretty high bar set by mass general law. So you, you know, it's got to be the shape, the topography, or the soil conditions of your lot are unique, that a literal enforcement of the bylaw would be a substantial hardship. So you got to, those are the guidelines you have to kind of get over to get the variance. So I think what you're saying here is your lot shape
Yes, it's.
Is unique.
It is like a very skinny piece of pizza.
Yes. And do you know what the, has anyone looked at the setbacks of any of the other houses on your street? Do you know, the front setbacks? Yeah. Because we also have, I think, exceptions, you know, for what your neighbors' front setbacks are, and sometimes that helps us in determining, you know, if it's kind of the way the neighborhood is, is they all have, you know, closer than 30 feet setbacks. That would be important to us. I noticed a plan in here, too. Was there a floor plan in here, too? Do I see the elevation plan? Okay.
Oh, the two.
Do you have a floor plan, too?
We have one, yes.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see, you know, what you're, you know, and that, you know, to do what you need to do to add the space. Right, so, right, you know, just curious, because you're adding the front porch, and what else are you adding?
So by adding the front porch, we're able to bring the front of our family room out a little bit, because now it has a front porch to match that, that additional space that will be in the front of our family room. We make, we'll make a mudroom there.
Bring it?
Yes, right there.
Oh, that little triangle, okay, all right, yeah, all right.
Very important triangle.
And that triangle's.
At the left end of the porch?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So that brings the family room out, give them this.
Yeah, that little mudroom there, yeah. And that portion looks like it has, I wonder what the setback is on?
I think our, I think our, it's the other side of the porch where we come closer.
Yeah. Yeah, somewhere between 27 and 30, 26, 7.
Especially at the front, the point.
Yeah. Any initial comments, questions?
I would just echo what you said about the standard for variance, and, you know, typically the substantial hardship, kind of prong of it, is that it's sort of depriving you the opportunity to use your property in a reasonable way. And just as I'm reading what's written in the application, you know, you're speaking in terms of, you know, improving curb appeal, and maybe increasing a property value. I don't know, you know, we can discuss that further, whether that's a sufficient level of hardship. It sounds to me like it's not the kind of thing that typically would get you a variance, but, because, as I say, the idea behind the variance is to not deprive you of the reasonable use of your property, but you already have a house there, and you want to make it bigger, and I totally understand that. But just in terms of applying the legal standard, hardship is, I think, something other than trying to improve the value of your property over what exists.
I think we're focused on that, because that was, there's also perceived to be some value to the town in some, in that way.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying. As far as the hardship, it's a really hard space to work with.
No, it definitely looks like the lot shape is a challenge.
Yes, a question about.
How, can you describe, I mean, Chairman asked us somewhat similar question, but can you describe how are the neighboring houses positioned relative to the street? You know, are they away from the street as much as your house is, or are they further back? Trying to get a sense of what the neighborhood looks like.
I think, so, we're a Gambrel Cape, and to the right is a colonial. I think we're about their setback maybe a little further. And then on the left of us is a split hollow, which I perceive to be closer.
It looks like to the left of you is a little bit more of a rectangular lot compared to what you, your lot is.
So the left meeting this lot here, sorry.
I'm going to ask Dave a question, since he's here, if you don't mind. Our building commissioner, so on these cases, when, you know, we have the six, what is it, 11 on projections?
Mm-hmm.
And I've always wondered, because it says uncovered and/or unenclosed porches, decks, platform, landings, or stoops, which are part of a required egress, shall not encroach more than 48 inches into the setbacks, and then uncovered steps that are, shall not enclose within five feet. Because we've had a couple of these come.
We also just had that changed in the fall. The wording for that was changed in the fall.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to.
That was the one, we actually had that issue on, because at one point, we had to, we had the wrong information on that one. And I know you, we, we had a change. So what's, and just maybe for the board, but, so when it's uncovered or unenclosed porch, I guess that's part of a required egress. So, you know, what does that mean?
Uncovered, well, anything, whether it's uncovered, unenclosed, it does not have a roof on it.
Okay. So my interpretation of unenclosed means it has a roof but no sides, and that mean, I'm not saying that's right. So what you're saying is it's with no roof?
Right.
Right, okay.
Without a roof.
Okay. So, okay. That would never clear when they, you know, an unenclo, uncovered to me, clear of no roof.
It's been written a couple of different ways.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But no, it's definitely, once a roof goes over it, that roof cannot project into the setback.
Okay. 18, more than 18 inches, right?
More than 18 inches, correct. Yep.
But with the three-inch variance, three-foot variance, so more than 18 inches.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Yeah. So it's three feet, which is more than 18 inches.
More than 18 inches, right, correct. But we're also talking about the posts that hold up that roof are part of the structure. So those posts cannot project 18 inches. Those posts are just up to the setback line.
So, okay, so we're talking 18 inches here total, right? I mean, effectively.
The roof, he's saying, can.
The roof overhang can extend 18 inches. Once you have the posts, it's to the setback line.
Yeah. If someone's holding that up, that roof up, that has to be.
Correct.
Would have to be within the setback line.
Correct. And sometimes people set the post back a little bit, then you use a bracket, which the bracket can extend into the setback as well. And your question about the average setback for the hollows beside, I think I talked to the engineer at the time, I asked him to shoot that, so I don't know what happened with that, to find out where we stood. Because I, whenever I see one of these, I always tell them, find out what the average setback is. Because if you meet the average, then that is your setback. And some of these, as you know, sometimes the average works.
Right, no, yeah, we've had, you know, definitely.
Yeah, but again, I talked to the engineer about it, but I never heard back from him.
Oh, okay, all right.
I assumed it didn't work at that point.
All right. Yeah. All right, thank you. Do you know if the engineer, so, I don't know if you talked to the engineer on that, but, like I said before, if you have, like, your neighbor's 25, and your other neighbor's 25 or 28, we could take the average of those.
I don't have those numbers.
Yeah. I'd be cute, yeah, again, without seeing it on here, it's hard to know if we're close or not close.
Just looking at.
Oh, your Google Maps?
Yeah. I think this is the property. And to the right, here. Relative to that property.
I don't know, it's hard to tell.
Sure. Seems rather similar to me.
Yeah, it does. And it was built. Do you know, when were these houses built, do you know?
1979.
So I guess one of the things is, if it didn't have a roof, what we're saying, that could go project 4 feet, 48 inches into the, into the front setback without a roof, and you wouldn't, it would be kind of by right, under what the code says. The reason you need the variance relief is putting the roof on it. You know, I think it's a, it is a nice feature to have out there. I'd be curious if the setback thing helped you in the case. It is, it's the end of a cul-de-sac, so, you know, the impact is, you know, like, yeah, zero, probably.
What is the, what is the width of the porch, total?
It would be the full width of the main house structure, but I don't have.
No, I meant, I meant from the.
Six feet.
Six feet. Okay. So half of the porch is projecting into the setback?
Yes.
So if you, literal enforcement would mean at most, you could have posts to the middle of the porch, and the roof extending three-quarters of the current porch. The porch itself, if I understood correctly, the underlying, the floor of the porch can extend, because it's, if it's uncovered, but the roof can only extend three-quarters of what you're planning in terms of a porch. Three feet, because that's within your setback, and then 18 inches into the setback, as long as the posts are kept within the setback. So you're really requesting that the posts and the, the posts go out three feet, and the roof extend 18 inches?
Yes.
I mean, just trying to understand what is being required.
Well, right. They're, I mean, it's, you know, if it was a three-foot porch, it'd be 30 feet, you'd have it. So it's a six-foot porch.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Right, but it's not, it's not the six-foot floor of the porch, that's the problem.
Right, yes, it's the roof.
If there was no roof, there would be no problem doing a six-foot porch. The issue is putting a roof over it, and particularly, putting a roof over it that. The issue is putting a roof over it, and particularly, putting a roof over it that has a post.
Right. So you, Ferry could put a post at three feet, cantilever out the deck.
Eighteen inches.
And cantilever out and have the roof overhanging half, eighteen inches of that.
Right.
If you wanted to comply.
That's what I was.
Yeah, no, yeah, with.
That's the literal, that's the literal enforcement of the bylaw.
Yeah. For the record, there's a letter from Arthur and Suzie Pearson, who live at Eleven Mohawk Circle. We, response to your letter, notify us about the public hearing. We support their application for a variance to allow a front yard setback of twenty-seven feet instead of thirty feet to allow for construction of a front porch. We reside at Eleven Mohawk Circle next door to variance applicants. So we have that letter.
Is that to your left, after, to your right?
As you face the houses to the right.
Thank you.
While we're on it, we have a letter from town engineer. Again, the plan should be stamped by the surveyor responsible for its preparation. Recommend that the sewer and water services be shown in the plan in order that they not be damaged during construction. With the application on the form for findings in section D, the person completing the application in case there will be ample front yard, as there's no sidewalk, the applicant and board should be aware that the property does not extend all the way to the edge of the traveled way of the street. Some of the grass area, which appears to be the front yard, is actually within the layout of the street and not part of the yard, as the case usually is. Fire department reviewed the application, had no opposition at this time. Conservation unanimously agreed, there's no comments or concerns. The planning board had no comments at this time. Board of Health voted unanimously, they had no concerns regarding the variance request. I think that was it for. Oh, there's also, this is a letter from a neighbor?
Yeah, that came in, I guess it just wrote on the, the notice.
Can't make out it, but. Somebody wrote, we are.
Our blessings?
Blessings, okay. Yeah?
It's with our blessings.
It's with our blessings. So I guess it's been blessed.
Does it say whose?
It says blessed, does it say that's blessings?
Anonymously.
F. Nazza, East Waffle. Audrey Jacobomi?
Oh, yeah. They, they're like kind of beyond, like, we kind of face them from Mohawk, near, in the Mohawk and Nazza.
Okay. All right. I don't know.
Well, my thought is, it is the end of a cul-de-sac, so the impact would negligible. And if the neighbors are saying, you know, this is something that they're, they're happy with and don't have an issue, then in my mind, with the exception of the fact that these plans need to be stamped, and with response to where the sewer and water are, I think that's an issue that can be easily resolved, that somebody takes a look and puts down exactly where it is. I don't know, it would seem to me. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't fall in the category of extreme hardship, but on the other hand, you like to do something with your property. It is the end of a cul-de-sac and your neighbors are happy with it, so.
What are you doing in the back again?
So, we might put a deck on the, off of, on the, on the right side, as you face the house from the front. We may add a deck there. And then the other side, what you see is the deck that's already there, we would just cut back so that we didn't have two stairways coming down and running into each other.
Yeah. All right. I mean, and you also obviously have a sloping lot, too.
Yes.
Yeah. Trying to think, I, you know. If we want to have them come back on the seven-foot plan.
My view on that is, we, we're granting a very specific variance. If the plans are wrong to their benefit, so they don't need as much of the variance, then, they don't need as much of the variance. If their plans are wrong and they need more of a variance, then they have to come back. I mean, we're, you know, so whether, I mean, they're presenting that this is factual, this is their evidence that they're presenting. If it turns out not to be factual, then, you know, our decision, what we're granting is fixed, to the extent that they use it. So I, you know, I would condition, my recommendation is, we do condition it, that there are stamp plans acceptable by the town engineer with the, with the utilities as requested as a condition, and that we're not granting any other relief, and if other relief is required, that they have to.
Come back again.
Come back, yeah.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Down on the number of hearings we have.
Yeah. And my question would be, and it's not showing on here, and I hate to bring it up, but what's the setback to the struc, to that, you know, to the addition part? You know? I just, you know.
I thought about that, and my thought was, again, it's, we are only granting the three-foot variance.
No, 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 exactly, no, no.
Which would apply to that piece as well as the porch.
Right.
So both have to comply with what was requested.
Makes sense.
You know?
No, of course. Yeah, no, I was just curious what, that, you know. It's just part of the hardship type of, you know, you have a unique shape, so you can't really add on too many places, so if you add on there, and you want to have a porch there, you know, to cover it makes, you know, it, you know, to not, if that's, you know, you have a new kind of.
It's a bleakness.
Changing the facade, you know, again, I mean, I think it's a. All right. Any other comment?
No. I mean, I agree that it's a very minor request, in terms of, it's not a huge ask, in other words. So I think, you know, notwithstanding the hardship element of it, I think, because it's very minor, I think I could agree to the conditions that you mentioned. My just general concern about granting variances for, you know, is just that the line will have to be drawn at some point. This isn't that case, I don't think, but, you know, otherwise it becomes sort of a practice of LeBorte grant variances. In this case, there's no, everybody seems to want this project, and there's no apparent opposition to it, but.
It is the end of the cul-de-sac.
It is a unique lot with a slope, a change of grade, you know, doing anything anywhere else is kind of difficult, you know, you don't really have much room to do it without it being very costly to do basement and first floor. And so, I mean, you know, the back, the back right corner, where you could probably have room to add, you'd have to build up at least two floors.
Right.
To add any substantial space, so.
I think that's, you know, probably that would be one addition that I would include, is that, I mean, if it was an entire facade, two stories, three foot into the setback, I think I would feel differently. In this case, what is intruding into the setback is a porch and a de minimis bump out of the building, right? So that I would probably include, because that's, I think, material. Right. I mean, you know, if they were, if another subsequent owner looked to replace that and build an entire, expand the house, two floors out into the setback, I think that's a different case. So I think we'd want to limit this variance to what specifically is being requested for the purpose of it being requested. The porch and the bump out of the house, yeah.
Okay.
Which makes it different, I think, than perhaps another variance that might come in front of us.
Right.
Anyone else from the public here to speak? Any other comments, Dave, or? No, all right. All right. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for case number ten dash seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Deliberated. Some of it already, but yeah.
We got.
Yeah.
I echo Bob's concerns, you know? I, I think your point's good, but, you know, I mean, I think, you know, again, if everyone came in and said, I want three feet, four feet, five feet, you know, so-and-so got it, and I should get it, then, you know, we have a problem on our hands, but, you know, it meets the general criteria of the shape and the.
Right.
Topography being unique, and there really is, you know, adding on a little bit to the front is really the minimal amount, the least, you know, variant, variation from the code to accomplish this.
I think the findings, at least the way I see it, is it's on a cul-de-sac, so the frontage is curved frontage, that's unusual, that's not terribly unusual, but it's unique. It's the pie-shaped lot that's very narrow.
Yes.
And that slopes significantly in the back. I mean, those three combinations together, I think, created a very unique situation. The hardship is, if they wanted to, if they wanted to expand this house, they literally would have to knock the whole thing down and reposition it on the, and I think that would be excessive hardship in this case. You know, the literal enforcement of the bylaw, you know, we, we want front setbacks so that we're not encroaching on the street. There are lines of visibility, you know, for exiting property. People are not playing right on the street. You're on the cul-de-sac here. I think that those, the concerns of the establishment of bylaw, the frontage, I think are somewhat mitigated by this particular situation.
I would agree.
So. And then just to recap the conditions, I think we had, just so we have it into the record, was.
Plans by engineer.
Stamp plans.
Utilities shown.
As required by town engineer.
Yep, and then.
Limited to.
Three feet.
Well, yeah.
I show on the.
Well, I showed on the plan, but yeah, yeah.
Right. So there, but I think we want to say specifically that the front porch and the.
Single-story bump out.
Yep. Single-story. I think you said mudroom.
Mudroom, yeah.
Single, single story, you know, single-story extension. Is the only structures that would extend into the setback.
Yeah.
As shown on plans submitted at town meeting.
Yeah. And if you to change or require.
No other relief granted?
Yeah.
Did you want the condition that the stamp plan be provided?
That was the first one.
That's the first one.
Cut that one.
All right.
I'll make, are we ready? Make a motion on behalf of the applicant to grant a variance under six feet of the zoning by law for a front yard setback of twenty-seven feet instead of the thirty-foot required in order to construct a front porch and single-story bump out.
Second.
Bob, Bob, one. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, good luck.
Good luck.
Mr. Chairman? Just clarification?
When I get an application in for, say, an addition, et cetera, et cetera, I absolutely require a stamp every single time. Now, the board has their own discretion, again, to do whatever they like.
Right.
I am asking you now, would you prefer that I ask for that stamp before I sign it, against you?
We'd prefer that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I can, I can do that without a problem.
Yeah, no, I figured.
And if there's anything else that part of the application goes that you would like ahead of time, just let me know.
I mean, that, Jim's not here, Jim will tell you. First thing he looks at would be like.
Oh, no. Absolutely. And as you know, some boards request it, some don't, and at the time, I didn't know, so.
And I know we have it on, say, this one, but we've had cases, you know, where people do some, you know, who knows who drew on the plan, right, you know?
And just, again, just so you know.
It'd be helpful, if that's all right with you.
Oh, no, absolutely. I mean, it's easy for Mike, because we do it anyway.
Yeah.
For everything else. And also, just so you know, again, normally, all the time, whenever there's one like this, I always ask them about lot front averaging, if they've already done it or not, so.
That's nice.
Usually, if it gets to you, they've probably either done it and found out it doesn't work, or just didn't do it.
At least they've been, at least they've been asked.
Yes, and that's, that will.
That's helpful.
I would just suggest, although it probably will be an extremely rare case, but the board has always said, we take any applications even if they're missing a stamp plan or whatever. I mean, so if you, if you come up to a situation, obviously you want to ask them for it, you want to really encourage them to provide it, but if they're insistent about filing with us, then you can't, you can't deny it.
Yes, I sure have done a board, I do know you have to say to that point, but I do, I do recommend that I will be, you know, I will be asking for it.
Cool. Great, I just wanted to add that. Oops, sorry, here.
Thank you, thanks. Thanks, guys. You can check in and vote, get a decision soon, so, that gets filed and then you end of the period, so. Yep. All right. We're done for the night. I gave them my tickets, so, you know, we got to make this quick. All right. Our next hearing tonight is a continuance from an application from Edward Development, case number seven dash seventeen. Welcome back.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. From Mac, you Mac, you Mac, and this is for on behalf of the applicant, Edward Development Company. I believe where we were at the end of the last hearing was, the board had a couple of questions and wanted us to relook at a few matters. Specifically, I believe, Mr. Chair, you were wanting more information on how the site ties into the downtown, and we were prepared to basically walk up the firmware of this site on the PowerPoint, explain the same. And I think it might have been Mr. Hill's, but I'm not sure, but you had, there were some significant questions about the safety of people in that five-spot parking lot that's kind of by this corner of the train. And I will let the engineer go into the details, but I think we've made everybody a lot happier, because we heard issues from the conservation commission regarding the work front, planning board just had questions about traffic. So what we are proposing is, if the board is willing to ask to amend our application to ask for a reduction to two-hundred-and-eleven spots as opposed to two-hundred-and-sixteen, remove that parking lot completely. We would put in a small right turn lane, because lots only so long, but we would do that, and then give the whole thing pending town meeting approval and the board of selectmen accepting it, the whole thing over to the town and having landscaped the piece that's not now roadway. So effectively, it removes the parking lot, there are no more pedestrians crossing at that intersection, which was a significant concern. And honestly, if, as we've mentioned, we thought we were possibly overparked to begin with, we don't think the removal of these five spots is going to impact the use or the ability of the residents to park, or the commercial folks to park on the street, et cetera. Again, I would just mention that the ITE numbers are about one-point-two, one-point-two-three. We initially were proposing, I think, one-point-four and change, and removing five still turns it to a one-point-three-nine spaces per unit, which is above what ITE is asking. We have a presentation I'll hand out, would again be a presentation, but in a couple of trees. But these are just hard copies of the slides that Jacob will go through. Yes, we are aware that there's a four-member board. Maybe if you want, okay with that, but I suspect that would be from. So with that, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any questions. For me at this point, I'd like to turn over to Jacob Murray, and then walk it through the engineering cases.
Good evening, board. As Phil mentioned, Jacob Murray from Waterfrozen Group. He kind of laid out the basics, so I'll just show you the slides.
He kind of laid out the basics, so I'll just show you the slides in the beginning to address the issues. The first one was on walkability. We wanted to see the proposed site was well-connected to downtown Central Business District and West Street and Main Street. Currently, the sidewalk ends at the subject parcel, and there's no sidewalk along Glenwood Ave and East Street. There is a sidewalk along Elm Street, and then the corner of East Street and Elm Street. The proposed project will add an eight-foot wide sidewalk along Glenwood Ave, along the street trees, and then also a five-foot along East Street. And this will also be connected with crosswalks to other parking areas in the area to allow pedestrians not only from the site, but also from parking lots in the area, if there's free parking available, to connect and to be accessible to Main Street, West Street, the downtown Central Business District. So, to repeat, just the entire site and all the residents will have pedestrian access through all three streets, East Glenwood and Elm, to the downtown Central Business District. The other change was, the parcel has three parcels, the main parcel where the building is, there's a parking parcel over in Glenwood Ave, and then there was the five-spot parcel along East Street. There was concern at the planning board, zoning board, really conservation level about this intersection. It is a dangerous intersection, there's a concern about the crossing of these parking spots to the building. So, the solution was to give the site to the town, allow for a left-turn-only lane and a right-turn-only lane at the intersection to provide better visibility, better parking access, and then re-vegetate this area at the discretion of the town in order to improve the 100-foot riverfront area. This is actually just, here's the landscaping plan. So, that these parking spaces will be removed, and then they'll be planted by the applicant, and that'll be within the 100-foot riverfront area, which is what the conservation commission was really concerned about. Along with that, there'll also be crosswalk lights, solid-powered lights at the crosswalks, both across Elm, and then across East Street at all locations. Turn it back to Phil.
We just had a few more
So, can I ask you a quick question about the, so the improvements, I think this is a great improvement. The area across, directly across the street, that sort of triangular shaped, I understand that's town property?
Right here?
Yeah. And is that plan to be improved at all? As a conjunction of those projects?
The sidewalk will be improved, the area between the river and the sidewalk is actually vegetated pretty well and pretty well landscaped, so there's no, there's no proposed improvements there.
I would just point out, as Jacob mentioned, there is no current sidewalk on Glenwood Ave. The sidewalk is being put there, it's basically on the applicant's property, we'll deal with Margaret Walker and the planning board, the board of selectmen for the appropriate easements or whatnot, so the public can use it. But that's how the actual building is being pulled back and providing an eight-foot sidewalk, so it's not encroaching and making Glenwood smaller. The street stays where it is, the building's actually coming back, and that's how we're hopefully tying in that whole street scape up and up to the center. So, just to kind of go over very quickly, I'm not sure if the board is aware or is not, when you were again asking about downtown, prior to filing through the, filing through your board, the planning board, conservation, or anyone else, the board of selectmen basically weighed in as road commissioners and said, "Before we do anything with our parking downtown, we want to talk to you." So, we spoke, and not surprisingly, they asked for some mitigation downtown. Just so the, we can outline what we're committing to, both as part of this process and part of what we've already agreed to with the board of selectmen. Significant portions of Elm Street and Glenwood Ave will be repaved. There will be, the applicant will actually supply and install irrigation on downtown commons. Again, it's not really tied to this project per se, but it's a good off-site improvement, will benefit the town, benefit the residents. Likewise, the town is requesting that some antique lighting be installed in the commons. We've agreed to do that, and that will again tie in with what the applicant is proposing along Glenwood Ave. The gazebo and Springwood path are a little bit beyond the scope of downtown, unless we agree to that. And then, again, not tied at all to downtown, but it was requested that we paved the DPW garage, and we have agreed to that as well. So, basically, above and beyond what we're proposing as part of the plan, more things are going to happen to downtown that will tie this site into that and vice versa.
Where's the gazebo going?
You'd have to ask the town administrator on that one. I don't believe it's down, I think it may be over here, but I'm not entirely sure. It was, it was Erst West, and we agreed to it. As far as the plans that we just talked about, again, we were talking about a new right-turn lane, updating the crosswalks, all of these were done after consulting with, blah, 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 from the DPW and Maggie Walker. So, we know that they're on board with, with what we are proposing. We are proposing flashing signage in Elm Street. Again, back to the antique lighting in the center, we will put new street lighting in Glenwood Ave that basically picks up the same theme, so it carries right down the street. The new sidewalk I've already discussed, we're widening the sidewalks in several places, and the board of health always wants to see bicycle racks for the residents, so we've agreed to do those, they'll be inside, but nonetheless, they'll be there. Again, as this has been mentioned before, we have multiple letters, I'm not going to ask to read them, I think you may actually have a couple more. Pretty much everything that's colored that's not green or blue are businesses that have sent in letters, and that's pretty much lists. So, we've got restaurants, attorneys, variety stores, et cetera. With that, I pretty much have exhausted the new material of the project. We have traffic, we have engineering, we have brought everyone to answer any questions you may have. And so, Mr. Chairman, I would ask if there's anything we can add further.
First, I want to say thank you. I mean, we've obviously asked you a number of things, and you came back and, you know, did what we asked, basically, so
Correct.
We, we do thank you. We know the applicant has worked hard on this, so we appreciate that, and I think those are all great improvements. Definitely positive changes that were made. So, I don't think we need to, I mean, I think they speak for itself, one of those changes, they're, you know, they're good. So, I think tying it into downtown was important. When did the selectmen commitments come?
That was actually last summer.
It was?
It was.
Alright.
And then we realized that we hadn't actually mentioned them.
No, you hadn't, yeah.
Probably let you know, not that it impacts your decision one way or another, but we are already committed to improving downtown, and we want to tie this site and the improvements we're doing for everyone else as well.
Yeah. Antique lights, like actual antiques or antique-looking?
I suspect antique-looking.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what they were, what, some of them, you know, not quite sure what the thought process is, but we'll let that, we'll let that be. What?
Did we see that before?
Which?
That looks like
No, that is, that is new. There was an, there was existing view, I was in the package, I thought.
Yeah.
That existing view, right?
So, that's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The photo Sims.
Photo Sims, yeah. Oh, okay.
That is, that is correct, that's a new picture. We'd only shown you proposed, so that is what it looks like now. I apologize, I
Some of the, I used
That's the whole
I don't remember us doing Sims before.
Yeah.
On the other project, yes.
Some new, this is
This is
You have the photo Sims so you can put on the big screen, or?
I do. All the way at the end.
I like pictures.
We can do that. Alright, so we've shown you these. We did the shadow study.
Yep.
If I flip through something, you want me to stop?
Yeah, yeah, you know. We may go back, right? We had that, right?
That's proposed, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's existing.
Existing, okay.
And then that is proposed, and that is existing.
You go back to propose for a sec?
I can.
Yep, perfect, yep.
Just to clarify, the sidewalk along this building in the front is quite narrow
It is.
As it gets to the
At the end of that building, it will open back up.
I saw it. At that point, you'll, it will open there.
Right.
So, that's looking down Glenwood from Maine.
Yeah, I forget what it is now, is it Deluxe Tux?
Right.
What used to be Video Paradise, I'm really dating myself, is right there, and the bank is here.
Deluxe Tux.
Okay.
Well, and then there's also, on that street is, I don't know, some, there's a couple of entrances on the street.
There's a few, there's an entrance right here for a business that I honestly have never been to.
Like a video.
Video or something like that.
Video editing or something.
So, basically, this is still private property up here, so you can't move their building, otherwise, we would consider it. So, our sidewalk will pick up, it's kind of in the shadow here, but right at the end of that building, it will open back up.
Is there any lighting going on that street, whether you or the town, do you know, or?
On Glenwood?
Well, we're of course doing it on our
You're doing it on your property, yeah.
But right along here, we don't have
Yeah, yeah.
So, down in there, there'll be lighting, up here, there's no place for us to put it. So, let's keep going. Okay, there we go. Main and East, okay, that's proposed, that's current. That's a rendering. Yeah, I think that it's ours, we've got for new.
The entrance.
Yes.
Don't know if we covered this the last time, I remember a concern about queuing from, what is that?
East.
East and
Actually, it's probably Elm.
Elm, yeah.
That the queuing could extend back to interfere with the operation of the entrance. People coming, what direction is that? South on 20, well, it's not 27 anymore, south on
Coming up here?
Yeah.
Right, coming this way?
Yep.
Stuck at that stop sign, or I don't know?
Yeah, that the stop sign would queue back
On Elm Street.
On Elm Street, so that it would interfere with people trying to, to enter into the property.
Take a left, yeah, yeah.
Turn that over to my traffic guy.
Good evening, Tim Thompson with Bar Corporation, traffic engineer for the project. There, there is potential for the queue during peak hours to extend past that driveway. Based on our analysis, the 95th percentile queue would extend past that during the PM peak hour. However So, this, this driveway right here, there is potential for the queue to go past there. However, being on this side of the roadway, where you're going to have the queue being developed on, on the south side of the roadway, what you're avoiding there is what we call courtesy crashes by having that queue on the other side. So, if you have, if you have a queue that goes beyond a driveway and the vehicle's trying to exit through a, through a set of vehicles, there's more, there's greater potential for them to not see a vehicle approaching from the other direction and get strike, being blinded from, from that particular side. Having the queue develop on the other side, there, this lane, so the westbound lane would be open, so they wouldn't be subject to having that, that courtesy crash develop in that scenario.
Okay, so
So, there is a situation where, you know, a vehicle might be trying to make a left turn out of here, and with the queue being passed by, they will have to, somebody might have to allow them to enter, but they aren't going to have, they're restricted by having a queue pass in front of the driveway.
And did you look at during that hour, what is the percentage of exiting vehicles from that that would be going left?
We do have those numbers.
Something like that. Something like that, yeah. Because then they would have to go down at around 27 versus trying to take a left.
Not a big deal. We have, during the AM peak hour, it would be 11 vehicles, and during the PM peak hour, nine vehicles. So, you're really looking at a small number of vehicles that are, that are making that left turn during the peak periods.
And is the queuing to the entrance during both those peak periods? On the 95th percentile?
The 95th percentile queue in the AM peak period is seven vehicles, and in the PM peak period, it's 13 vehicles. So, seven vehicles would be roughly 175 feet, so that, I'm not entirely sure what the, the distance would be to that driveway from west, if that would reach, if that's 175 feet or not. But again, that's the 95th percentile queue, so that's the maximum amount of queue that you're expecting to see within that hour.
That's the morning, that's
That's the morning.
Right, and 13 in the evening. So, really, you've got a, the substantial issue is during the evening peak.
Correct.
Right, potentially close to it in the morning peak.
Correct. Where you have fewer vehicles making that left turn, exiting the site during the PM peak hour than you do in the morning. In both of those, it's only 11:00 in the morning and 9:00 in the afternoon.
Okay.
But it could, it could get very difficult to take that left out of there. I mean, would it make sense to make that right turn for certain hours coming out? And it's not the most inconvenient thing.
Seeing that it's really only the 95th percentile queue that, and the maximum queue that we're expecting to be passing that driveway, and the few amount of vehicles that we're expecting to have be making that left turn totally, I don't, I don't see the need for, for restricting that.
How about that? Do not block.
What?
What, on the road?
No, exiting the property.
Do not block.
My concern would be that your residents would start to queue up on your property trying to exit, and if one person was trying to take the left-hand turn, if you had a sign and it's your exit, which is a courtesy sign, don't, don't block the entrance, it might encourage them to take the right if that, if they couldn't take the left, something along those lines. I don't know, other board members' thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know, but it strikes me that if somebody really wants to take a left there, and after a few days of not being able to make it, they're just going to turn right and go around block.
And if they've had two or three people behind them, they're going to tend to go around to the right anyway.
So, I don't disagree with the
They work itself out.
Courtesy sign would help that, but I think, I think it'll work itself out, so to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would have to add to that, that the queue that would be developing for those vehicles making the left turn would be very minor in that it's only 11 vehicles and nine vehicles per
It's going to get busy down there. I mean, that's part of, I mean, there's going to be, there's traffic there now, it's not going to get any better, so. It's also, you know, part of
Do you have a figure of the number of vehicles entering onto the property, turning, so in other words, going south on Elm?
Yes, we do, we do have those numbers.
And I'm assuming that that would simply, they would, they would be in that queue until they slowly reach the entrance, till they could take that left-hand turn onto the property.
That is, it's six vehicles during the morning peak hour, and 13 vehicles during the afternoon peak hour.
Coming
Making a left into that driveway.
More people are coming home at night than are
I'm just, I'm just surprised that they're coming home from Medford particularly, or the Asment, right?
Medfield.
Medfield. I do that all the time. Yeah, 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 right.
We had, we had split traffic up at the East and Main intersection, that would be entering that driveway, thinking that, you know, a significant portion of traffic would be coming from I-95, going into that intersection, and then splitting at East and Main, depending on if they preferred to make the left turn, the left turn or the through movement down east and into the site. So, that had been
So, it may, it may, it may twist itself out a little bit.
It's going to get busy down there.
Yeah.
I'm going to avoid driving that way. I mean, you know, it's a busy, there's a lot going on, the train's there, there's projects downtown, I mean, you know, the pros and cons, and, you know, there's a lot of pros, so, you know. Hopefully, it forces more people to take the train, I guess, you know, that, you know, we would hope that, you know, and Hopefully, it forces more people to take the train, I guess, you know, that, you know, we would hope that, you know, and, but, you know, I mean, kinda don't know.
Because it can have both ways, you know, it's, it goes with growth, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, you know, we'll have to see, you know, again, it's.
We wanna boost the downtown, and, I mean, it's.
You're adding.
You have to weigh the pluses and minuses.
Yeah, I think there's only, you know, we'll have to, yeah, I mean, there's so much you could probably do from a traffic standpoint, but, you know, it also, you know, there's gonna be some negative impacts, I can't deny it, so, but, like I said, it's always a weighing of benefits versus the impact, so. Yeah, so I mean, I mean, if there's any other, I don't remember if there's any other comments and reports on signage or anything, like, better, any signage for.
Basically issued a plea letter.
Yeah.
In fact, I believe it says there are no more comments, we've addressed signage and whatnot to her satisfaction. Again, we met with Paul LeBlanc and her at the same time, so we got highway talk in the same.
Yeah, the next intersection's a tough intersection, you know, and that, so I mean, I think improved signage probably helps the situation. It's not gonna solve anything, but it definitely.
Sure.
Probably helps better than what's there now, and I'm sure I think that was part of stuff you had in there already.
Yes.
Improved signage, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So making a hard cut rather than kind of a.
Well, I think losing those five spaces and having a left and a right lane right there is.
Yeah, that's a big improvement.
A huge improvement.
Right there, I agree.
Yeah, obviously landscaping, landscaping, that very critical environmental issue is very important, but, the two lanes are very important.
Absolutely.
I think that was a, you know, in the whole scheme of things, the five spaces versus that is kind of a no-brainer, given that we're at the train here, so.
Yes.
And if I have my calculations right, with that reduction, the lot that's, separate lot, it's like twenty-one spaces?
On Glenwood, this one over here, I believe that is correct.
Yes. Yeah, so that leaves, what you're proposing is then one hundred and ninety on the property, so not including, right? Because two-eleven minus twenty-one?
Actually, on the main site, correct, but this is all owned by one owner, and it will still be owned by one owner.
That's what I meant, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, I haven't broken it down, certainly if we get to the decision, we can identify it, but it's one ninety under the building, twenty-one across the street on Glenwood.
And I was just noting the ITE is one eighty-seven, I think it was?
Yes, I believe so.
So effectively, with the main building, you're providing more than what ITE calls for?
Yes.
Yeah.
In many regards, granted, cases stand on their own, and one doesn't mean another, but this is a lot simpler than what we went through two weeks ago. We have one owner controlling everything, there's no differentiation between commercial, residential, and he controls two hundred and eleven spots, and that's that.
Right, now, before we get into the relief request, so, on the parking, you had this question, I know we talked about it. How do you see, and again, just curious, you know, assigned spaces for each unit, have you not thought that far on something like this?
Absolutely, assigned spaces.
Assigned, yeah.
To just maintain the peace.
But, and, and under the building, is that open, like, in any, like, is that gated, how do you usually do?
It will be gated.
It will be, yeah, yeah. And then visitor spaces, like, some dedicated or kinda?
Dedicated, dedicated handicap, dedicated movie, and dedicated visitor.
And then for the commercial, you kinda see, I mean, we have the lot, kinda, obviously any spaces downtown, but the lot across the street will kind of, you would think, be the logical place for that, yeah.
Yes, and it is where we've put the retail component, is right on Glenwood, so it all kinda makes sense, or we try to anyways.
No, 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 I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's kinda makes sense with that lot there, and then, and loading, what are we thinking of for loading spaces? Do you need any?
I don't see there's gonna be a significant demand for it.
The spaces in front of the building, those are town spaces?
Yes.
On the road, yeah.
And they're expected for Maine.
Oh, I'm just thinking of what businesses may be there and what loading needs, and how do we.
Can you bring that through the building?
Solve that.
We can certainly bring it through the building, sure.
Bring it through the building?
Well, in here and there, as opposed to unloading and offloading on Glenwood.
Loading and unloading on Glenwood would not be a good idea.
Right.
Narrow road.
Yes.
Right.
There is room for a truck to get in and park.
So no, so maybe no loading signs out on Glenwood?
Well, I was just thinking of actually where would be a good place, you know, that could be reserved for load, you know, you may need it or not need it, you know.
They're saying bring it into the property, and then.
Well, no, 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 I'm saying on the, you know, like, you know, do you dedicate an area where it could be spaces or it could be load, you know, I'm just thinking of, you know, depending on, like, if you have a business that needs certain loading, you would certainly not want to lose them because, you know.
Well, it would be restaurant.
Right, mostly restaurant.
And professional space.
Yeah.
So it's really just the restaurant.
It's the restaurant, you know, unless you had like a small market, but that's, you know, not gonna have, that's something, that's what, but, something that had deliveries like a restaurant every day would probably, you know, just to have a plan, again, I don't think it's a unsolvable type of one, just trying to figure out what makes the most sense, both for you and making sure it's viable for them and for the town, so, like you said, the roads are tight around there, we're not, you know, or you, you know, talk to the town about maybe a couple of spaces in front or certain hours for, I mean, again, I don't think we wanna limit you to say you can only load from, you know, four to five in the morning, but, you know.
We can certainly, whether you wanna condition it or otherwise, say we'll work with Margaret, the town engineer, to make sure that it's adequately.
Yeah, I think it's, again, it's not a huge issue, I think it's just something that we wouldn't want to become, you know, a problem for anybody, yeah.
This is, there's a whole drive aisle here that's on the backside of the businesses. Because remember, it comes in here, and then that's a drive aisle to around here, I think.
It is, yeah, no, right.
So isn't that plenty of space for loading?
Yeah, that's, I don't know, I'm sure, you know. That's all, all right, I think you're good. All right, so back to the, so we have three items of relief before us, and the parking, which I think we've talked about, pretty much a lot of detail, and, you know, my guess is it seems like that number is two-eleven now, we'd amend it to two-eleven, right? Or you would ask us to amend it to two-eleven?
We would ask you on our behalf to amend the application to two-eleven, yes, please.
We have the height requested of fifty-nine, where fifty-two is allowed.
Correct.
And we have the FAR, which is more than the three-point-five multiple allowed.
Yes.
I think we've seen evidence on the height issue, I know there was charts in here, but.
Certain one flip back to it.
Maybe we need to flip back to that one, or. Mostly revolved around the retail space and having that viable space, if I remember correctly.
That is correct, if I can get there, one damn bad thing about PowerPoint, you can't just. No, I, I, well, we can show you, basically, graphically, with what the building will look like, you've got, and I guess I can put on my glasses, that point in my life, excuse me for a second. Basically, you can see you've got a fairly high first floor, and that's to accommodate the retail space. You've got ten-foot-six allocated for the next three floors, and the top floor is a little bit narrower, and the roof, basically, to get to, it's not really, I don't think you're getting elite qualified, but, to get to, much more energy efficient these days, the roof itself's three feet thick. So that's what it looks like, and then we have shown you this before, basically, the Glenwood app condominiums and what you're right across the street. Talk about the architecture, the way it looks, but at least the way it was built. It is also commercial first floor, and then four stories above residential, and it's really just a matter of what the market had back then versus now, and ultimately, you can see there's a difference in, that's a seven-foot-eight difference, it's not any one thing in particular, we're not asking for another story. You know, the, oops, sorry, you have floors that were one foot thick, now they're two feet thick. You've got five floors, that's five feet, right there, you have grade differential, which we're not really even factoring in. You've got seven-foot-eight ceilings, now people are looking for nine-foot, we didn't propose to go to nine, we said eight-six is probably okay, and so we didn't have to ask for quite as much, but we do feel eight-six is about what the market is looking for at this point, so. We are not asking for another story, we're actually asking to build the same building that was built ten years ago to today's standards, and that ends up with slightly over fifty-seven feet, we're asking for fifty-nine just in case something shifts in construction, and we don't wanna come back, if at all possible, and so that's, that was basically the part and parcel, and then as to why we can't go down, soils just don't support it, we've had a structural engineer look at them, we have the Napa River, it's actually flowing immediately adjacent to the site at the one corner. So again, if we could go down, we could probably take off four or five feet, and actually, in this particular case, that is the variance we're roughly requesting. So I think we're subject to your questions, we've made a pretty good argument as to what needs to be there, and, you know, we have certainly unique circumstances, we've got a Napa River, we've got flooded soils, it just doesn't support going down. And then, you know, hardship in this particular case is we would have to build either a substandard building or not this building, and, or what this site provides, this is pretty much the best use of that. And certainly, it's the board's judgment, but we've shown you the pictures, we aren't increasing the shadows significantly anywhere. Just because the whole center of town drops, this doesn't loom over anything, you saw the before and after pictures, yes, you can see it, I'm not gonna try and say that it's invisible building, but it does pretty much blend in with the existing roof line if you're sitting at the center of town looking out over the building. It will look a little bit taller than anything else coming under the bridge and, you know, up twenty-seven from Medfield, but again, looking at the facade there, I don't think it's to anybody's detriment.
Two-feet-first structure, you shouldn't need more than, I mean, that, you have good room there, I mean, right? I mean, and two and a half, two-four on the first floor, so, as much, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem, but, you know, we may wanna limit you, you know, I know you want a little bit of breathing room on that, but, you know, I don't think you need much more than what you proposed, so.
We're basically asking for sixteen inches. Certainly, board can say no, you won't want to give us four inches of wiggle room, we've asked for.
That's good, that's, no, again, I don't think, I, you know, I'll speak for myself, but I think the, it doesn't seem like a, the request for the height variance doesn't seem out of line with, you know, the reasoning and the code, so.
I would agree.
Yeah, but, you know, we also, you know.
Understand.
If, you know, you could have asked, you know, we're just, you know, we're trying to tie it to real numbers that we can see, and, you know, not to say you would do, but if you have fifty-nine, you would just go, you know, you could add, you might as well just make it fifty-nine at the end of the day. I'm not saying that, that would, that you would do that or it's been proposed, so.
There's no reason to.
No, no, I think what you proposed is a good plan, and I think that, you know, if there was a constructability, because we know if you'd use this or that, and however you're gonna do your structure could impact your floor-to-floor, and, you know, and it could add or take away, I mean, a few inches, so, again, not a huge deal, it just.
I think we're more concerned with the calculations themselves.
Where you, the average grade.
Just the average grade, something changes, I don't wanna come back as the math changed. In this particular building, we talked to the building inspector first, the current building inspector, and we've used his methodology, but, I saw another project that changed seven feet with virtually no physical change.
It could change, yeah, I, that's what I mean, I, you know, it wasn't to, it's to say how you presented it, whatever that, you could come up with the average grade, whatever is shown on the plans kinda is kinda how I look at what you're proposing, you know, and if it was, you know, even if it changed three feet, it was still, you know, I think what presented is kinda how I looked at this, you know, I didn't really take into account, you know, the average grade for the impact, I looked at the shadow studies and all the other things, and the reasoning why you couldn't go down, and, you know, that's how I looked at it, not, you know, who's gonna calculate average grade here, which is important, but on a site like, big site like this, where, you know, people could have different interpretations on that, you know, I think, you know, kinda what you presented is more relevant to the question, but.
Through you, the, I mean, it would have to come down to an issue of calculation, right, because, or, I should say, typically, we condition that it be built as presented on the plan, and the plan calls for, you know, these stories, and effectively, this calculation, which does not go up to the fifty-nine, therefore, unless there's a calculation error, you still have to build the same building, right? Because of the condition.
That is correct, also in the process, okay, I'll turn it over to the experts.
Good idea, it will do.
Give me a room now, sir. Where you want to park at Glenwood? Well, there is one of, I'll wait in front, that's fine. The area in the far right corner there is where the restaurant is. And we need a certain depth for the restaurant, eleven-foot ceiling is probably a good height we work with, and then we need structure above that. Well, with two-foot structure above that for the steel frame that would be there, but we have to have two deep beams right in that corner to pick up everything above. Those beams are the three feet deep, so they'll be one foot into the restaurants, we'll have a ten-foot clear under that, but then an eleven-foot ceiling, and then allowing for two-foot of depth for the rest of the structure around those beams. That's where the grade actually comes back up, you can almost see it here where it dips at the entrance and then comes back up. So we need that for accessibility, so that people can go right into the restaurant. From there up, the floor-to-floor for the residential floors is dictated to ten-foot-six. That height is where we're locked in, we can't go any lower because of accessibility, we can't go any higher because of accessibility and then the structure. What happened is the average grade is deeper into the site, it's lower, and it's a foot and a half lower from this corner down, so it's actually increasing the building height, even visually, it doesn't change anything, it's just, again, the calculation. The floor-to-floor above, ten-foot-six, the two-foot depth is, we need that depth for the structure for the span, but also, it's where we put the ductwork. If we don't, if we narrow up the depth, then we have to do the ductwork underneath, and so we're back to the same scenario, so we're better off going two feet, get the structure where it needs to be, and then keep the ductwork up in that, and then we have true nine-foot ceilings versus the softens underneath and things like that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think what you've planned, I think what's on the plan is, seems fine, so, just wouldn't want it to be, you know, if they told you your average grade's a foot off, you know, that you were, it's actually a foot higher, I personally wouldn't have a problem, because, you know, I think I've looked at it from what's been presented as to the impact on the shadows, and, you know, the visual impact, none of that's gonna change, it's just a calculation of, you know, someone else may look at the average grade at a different spot and say, you know, you didn't calculate it right for some reason, so.
Little bit of room for future.
Like you said, unless there's a, unless there's a change of the average grade, I think we like to build, you know, I think from a height standpoint, you know, I think you made a good argument on to why you met the criteria to get that variance.
So that's the corner, that locks it in.
All right, so that's all, I mean, it was, it was kind of nitpicking, Phil, because.
No worries taken, Greg, just to your point.
We didn't do that, you know.
You, I completely understand. I completely understand, but just to Craig's point, we want to build what we submitted, and we would suggest, you know, when you vote, it's as shown on the plans and titled blah, blah, blah. So, it's, no one's trying to switch out anything, it's just if something, somehow, Dave Norton tells me it's fifty-eight and a half instead of fifty-seven four.
That's fine, as shown on the plans, we'll give you that, that, I think that, there's no problem giving you the, that little leeway in case there's a change, but as long as it's shown on the plans or floor-to-floor.
Right, I mean, what we present is what we want to build.
That's usually our first condition, is the building shall be constructed as shown on plan.
However you want to condition it.
Let's be telling the building differently.
It's usually part of the vote, actually.
Both.
Either way.
All right. Your last request for relief?
The floor area ratio.
Yes.
Effectively, we discussed this with the board, just to keep everything simple, we are not trying to label part of the garage commercial, part of it residential, we're just taking it out of the equation. We have approximately fourteen thousand and change retail commercial on the first floor. And that is effectively about seven thousand, slightly less than seven thousand square foot increase of what's there already. And just to kind of walk you back through that, the current foundry complex is about sixty-two thousand square feet. It is approximately half vacant, not quite, but half, and has not been able to be rented for years, or we wouldn't be here. We'd have a foundry complex that was, you know, the mall they envisioned. So, that kind of isn't there. And then, of the approximately thirty thousand square feet that's left, all but seven thousand and change of that is not, I want to be careful in saying it, at best would be prior non-conformity.
Slide thirty-seven. Sorry, I don't have the memo on.
So, I will go to slide thirty-seven. There we go, thirty-eight. At any rate, so, we can use the real numbers, but again, it's about sixty-three thousand square feet there. Vacant is twenty-four thousand, and of the occupied space, over thirty thousand square feet are not allowed uses, they're manufacturing or industrial or something that's been a holdover. And so, once we tear the building down, I can't put them back to begin with. So, effectively, you have just under eight thousand square foot of commercial retail that's there that could be replaced with the same people if they so chose. Our proposal is to provide a fourteen thousand square feet, which is actually an increase of available commercial space downtown. It doesn't feel like it, but when you actually see what's on the site and what's historically viable, that's really where we are. And again, as far as the uniqueness of the lot, if this was a forty-eight-foot lot that had a street on each side of it, you could put commercial on both sides, you would have no problem if it even had a street down the middle. You have an enormous square in the middle of Walpole, and there's no economic way to put a retail of a smaller, you know, something that you're going to find in the center of Walpole in the middle of that block. If it's not on the street, it's not usable space. So, that in regard is unique compared to most other spots. You know, Home Depot could go there, but that's probably the last thing we want to put in the center of Walpole. You know, as far as the character, small businesses and whatnot, they really can only go in one place, and that's Main League, one would have, which is where we've put them all and increased the sidewalks and made accessible, et cetera. So, you have unique circumstances, you have a hardship both on what's actually economically viable. And, everything, really, it can be certainly interpreted well within your purview as to meet the criteria of variance. And again, it's not going to diminish the intent of the bylaw, we're actually increasing available commercial space in the downtown, we are doing it in such a manner that we aren't hurting anybody else, because again, this was purely off of kind of counting vacant storefronts and assessors amounts, I don't have anything more scientific, but if you look at currently in the downtown, there's about thirteen thousand and change square feet vacant space. If we add too much in this particular place, that's just going to make, I won't say make things worse, you'll have additional people, but it will potentially negatively impact, you know, current business owners or landowners, I should say, who are trying to rent out the space in the center of town. So, we feel that certainly what we're providing is within the intent of the CBD, and we think it's certainly justifiable. The number is large, but again, as composed, compared to another request that you saw two weeks ago, we aren't trying to, trying to count anything as far as commercial use for the parking. I think he's not here, but Mr. De Selle said, well, okay, get it, it's the letter of the law, but not really in the intent. Here, you, you know, it seems like a big number, it is a big number, but we're asking for what's actually there. And I would say, again, this is actually a slightly smaller project than Walpole Station. Again, they are not by any means a precedent for you, this fall, rises and falls in some matters, but they're providing as much retail and fifty less units. So, I would say that this is in, well within the bounds of what could be here.
Ramoni, is there any administrative space on the first?
There probably will be, at least to begin with. Again, if everything, market's going to dry it. As soon as they, if they can rent fourteen thousand, one of the units on the second floor will end up being the administrative space. Initially, the administrative space is going to be right on the street. And we certainly have no problem with a condition saying five thousand or thereabouts has to be dedicated at all times to, I think, to third-party public use or something similar. But at this point, you know, until we build it and they will come, right now, they're absolutely administrative space on the first floor, but.
But that administrates, administrative space you're counting in your commercial?
Fourteen thousand, I guess.
In your fourteen thousand, okay, I just want to be clear.
Or amenity space, whatever, I mean, I don't, I mean, you must have other amenity space in the building, I would imagine.
Yeah, the only amenity space is going to be the, like a health club, you know, workout area, but, I mean, we expect we're going to be in the nine or ten thousand square feet of.
Retail.
Third-party rental.
Yeah.
And we'll have a model apartment, which on a project this size, you have to have a model apartment to show people.
And that amenity space is also counted in the fourteen thousand?
Yes.
The first one.
Basically, we're expecting nine to ten thousand of retail, which would leave the balance of four to five thousand as amenity space. And that will adjust kind of depending on what can be rented. Ideally, you rent all the retail to retail folks and.
Yeah, I know it's the retails, I hope the retail works, I mean, for the benefit of the town. I mean, obviously the benefit, I mean, but, you know, I know from experience, it's tough, the retail downtown.
Well, it's been fact that that's going to be a restaurant.
And you, right, and with people, and they need people to survive, the restaurants. And, you know, the people need to be there, the restaurants don't survive on, you know, and so, hopefully, you know, we can find somebody, you could find somebody that, you know, is a good tenant for you and a benefit to have down there for the town, so. We would want to put a limit on, again, it's not the end-all, be-all, you also don't want it to be vacant, I mean, that's not the purpose of these, the central business district is create space just to put residential above and let the retail sit vacant, it's to actually create more of a vibrant downtown that people could walk to and.
Up conflict.
Yeah, no, yeah, I hope so, you know, I hope so. I mean, we have the other project, we have some other spade-aces downtown that could use, I mean, from the bigger picture, you hope this helps spur that as it's kind of, this is the central spot downtown in my mind, you know, it is, you know, kind of really smack dab in the center. Maybe not right up on Main Street, but pretty, you know.
Pretty much.
Pretty much the center of town, I mean, this is kind of, you know, the project, so. I don't know what that number is, and I wouldn't say that if we told you it was, you know, say fourteen, it had to be fourteen, and then you came in a year and said, half of it's vacant, you know, we wouldn't say, all right, let's do seven, I'm not, you know, so I don't know what the board feels on that number, but I also don't think it's to hold you to it no matter what, it's, you know, we want to make it work for everybody, so. All right.
Yeah, to me, that's the intent of that floor area, is to promote the principal use of commercial space in the central business, because that's what we have that district for. So, yeah, I would want to see a condition that would go to that intent of the bylaw to encourage the third-party, or however the term we use before, commercial use open to the general public. And then, as you said, I, you know, if it's vacant, then that's a very good justification to come back and have that condition adjusted.
And I, but I, I think it's, I think the point that Phil made on the, you know, a lot of the lots in the central business district are, have more frontage than they do depth, and so, you know, you, when you think of it, you think of, you know, a little strip where you have retail.
Yeah.
And then maybe some units above, and that's, there is no flip side of that, there's no wasted space here, you know. I mean, in essence, we, in literal enforcement, you would be a strip of retail, some units above, and then a vast parking lot probably, or something else that wasn't beneficial, really, to the town, like, you know, a big box store, you know, that could use the bulk of the space, and, you know, you know, not that, you know, so I think that usually a big square lot isn't unique to that zoning district, but here's one instance where a big square lot probably is unique to the central business district.
You look at every, literally everything other than Kendall Mills are all fairly small lots, or over the years kind of became an amalgamation. All through in here, those are all fairly, again, to your point, have as much frontage as they do depth.
The other, what's the other parking there, is that from the?
Which, here?
On the other, no, in your yellow, on the other side of, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's behind Bank of America.
That, yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's the Glendale condominiums, that's partially town lot, partially private lot.
It is, okay. Town owned part of that lot, huh?
It does. And that's kind of the problem with the enforcement thing, because it's, well, which, which spots do the police get to have jurisdiction over versus which are private? I don't, I don't envy John Carmichael, and this guy's trying to figure that one out.
Yeah, so. We have anyone else from the public here who want to add some comments?
I think it's a great project, and I think you got a great developer, so you can vote unanimously.
Name and address for the record.
Name and address for the record.
Tom Brady, twelve Misty Lanes, Walpole, Mass.
Thank you, Tom. Again, I will point out that Tom is the only member of the public here tonight on what is, you know, some huge projects we've had downtown that I think it's just always, it boggles my mind that, you know, support against, I mean, you know, the point of having these is so we can hear you guys, hear the audience, and everyone tells me new things, I say, come to the meetings, and nobody wants to come, so, what are you going to do, right?
Well, at least we get an endorsement from most of the merchants up.
We did, no, no, we did.
And that speaks for itself, the sky's uninserted.
Yeah, it really does.
But they will always eflag.
And I'm opinionated on a lot of these subjects, but I think the design of this building, I really, you know, I think, I just personally like it, I think it fits into that stretch of, that downtown, and I think it's a, you know, it's intended to be a great benefit to downtown. Clearly, a lot better than what's there right now, so. And we do have somebody who I feel is committed to making, seeing this through to the end, so that's always, always a plus for the town. Nothing to do with the relief requested, but points noted, yeah. All right. So, I think we've covered those are the three relief, the parking is a special permit.
Yes.
And the other two are the variances.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm sure we have a draft decision somewhere.
Probably with the young lady at the end.
I'm sure it needs a lot of work.
It needs conditions. Because I wasn't totally sure where we were going, I could kind of guess, but rather than do that, I figured we'd just talk through it.
Well, I think, let me take a second to look through it, just in case, I mean, I, you know, we sometimes close these probably too soon, and then we read this decision and we don't have chances to talk about things in it, so, not that we'll, you know, I just be, once we close, there's no, there's no questions, so.
Works for me. I know it's somewhat repetitive, but I think to be clear, because if it came up, first condition is that the building shall be constructed as shown on the plan presented at a public hearing. It's repetitive because if you see, the motion includes the reference, but this way, if there ever, if something comes up and the building needs to be conditioned, you know, you can come and alter that condition.
No worries whatsoever.
So, that was one.
Just for the record, too, sorry, before we keep going, we have a letter from the town engineer from May tenth that said, all comments made in memorandum from this department date, May second, have been resolved. As Phil noted, there's a couple new letters of, I think Ginjo supports it, so we have a couple of new support letters. We have quite a package of support letters, so, good to see. There's a package, there's a host of letters. I think that was any new comments that came in?
Yeah.
All right.
And I think that if you, you emailed, I think I read an email, the list of support letters, so we should have had all of that.
Yeah.
For, if I'm not mistaken.
They're in the record.
That's there in the record.
Yeah.
No more than two.
Oh, good.
Twenty.
Really?
They're also in the package that you just got.
So, so, his first request, we'll just walk through and see if we have any comments.
Good question, are you asking about the relief, are you asking about the conditions we might impose?
Yeah, I mean, just so we could get them, I mean, we could deliberate it after, but I figure.
Yeah.
If there was any conditions we want to discuss with the applicant.
Well, we talked about that the parking is going to be gated and, you know, some elements of control, I'm not necessarily suggesting those conditions, but I'm just inquiring if the board is inclined to impose, you know, assigning parking, gating the parking area. I.
I think that they already said that we're going to sign.
Well, I mean, yeah, but just in case, you know, I mean, what I'd, I would rather, I think, see just a parking management plan provided to the town economic director slash wasite planner, Liz. I don't, again, unless, I mean, if you're fine saying, here's what we want to condition it, we'll have gated this, we'll have assigned this, I just, I wouldn't want to let you. it, we'll have gated this, we'll have assigned this," I just, I wouldn't want to let you in case...
We'd rather not.
Something changed and you said, you know, "It's better if we," and I think a construct, a parking management plan that just said how you're gonna do it was submitted to the town for, you know...
That's fine.
I think that just gives you, you know, again, who knows how the final iteration will work on some of that, so I think we just want to be cognizant of, there's due consideration given for managing the parking.
Because especially with, if it's a restaurant, there could be quite a struggle with the Glenwood Street parking, that lot, your lot that's on Glenwood, and the adjacent lot in terms of, so, having a plan to the town allows the town to work with, with you on how the parking is being managed.
Yeah.
It's fine.
That makes sense to me.
That way, it's, yeah, seems easy way to do it.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Because that covers, I mean, I think, you know, we definitely want some visitor, designated visitor spots, I mean, you have to have the handicap spots. I don't know how you would handle the parking across the street there, like two, you know, what that, how that works, but, you know, I don't want to just tell you, "It's gotta be like this," and, you know, kind of whatever use is kind of a different use, or who knows what you get there, so I think as long as that's presented and...
Come up with a plan and make sure Liz gets it.
Yep.
Do we want to articulate what?
Job title list tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think it addresses resident parking, visitor parking...
So do we want to say, resident, commercial, visitor, loading?
Loading.
Commercial loading?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, no, not, yeah, I think as long as it addresses those and how to deal with them, I would be, I'd be fine with it, so.
So those topics, but not limited to?
Yeah, security for parking, you know, so.
Enforcement.
Stuff you'll be doing anyways, yeah, the security enforcement. I think that's two burdens, so just to put a one-page thing together and...
No, I mean, it makes sense. We'll let the town know what we're doing, and that way, they know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Good. So for parking, any other? I mean, I think that's a pretty straightforward request.
Yep. Is the, so the plan is, is it gonna be tied to, I'll give some permits or anything like that, or just by date cert submitted, or how would you typically condition that currently?
Yeah, that's a good point, prior.
Prior to final occupancy?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you never know what's gonna come up during, you know, construction and who you come in as a tenant, or who, how you decide to manage it, or all that stuff, so.
And I would just add, I think it'll be number three, I would suggest, it seemed to make sense before, the applicant desire to make a change, changes to parking numbers that apply for the board for modification of the special permit.
Where's that?
The one condition I threw in there, 'cause it just seemed to make sense.
Okay.
That's kind of a truce, though. Oh, well. Because, yeah.
We kind of stepped out of this around less time, and it seemed to apply equally here, so I figured it in there. Just to your point, Matt, five years from now, if we're way over parked, maybe something can change, more retail, I don't know. So this just spells it out, we can come back and talk to you about it.
Place where gazebo.
Exactly.
Do we want to keep going on conditions, or do you want to look at the findings?
I mean, I think we could do the findings, we're pretty much...
Finding and deliberation.
Yeah, just going through any conditions that we may want to talk to them about.
So, do we want to go onto the conditions, that's parking?
Yeah, those parking, remove the conditions for height.
Height.
As shown on the plan, obviously. We'll deliberate on the findings, so we don't need that conditions. What did we have in here about roof, again, mechanicals on the roof and everything, it's, you know, do we have any parapets, or?
We do.
Yeah, is that in the decision of?
I don't think it actually is ever mentioned, because the bylaw stops height at the, what you remember, membrane, membrane of the roof.
Okay.
So the parapets and air conditioners, whatever, are actually above the building height.
Yeah, all right, but so, that's all shown on the plan now, or not yet?
Yes.
Yeah, you have a roof plan that shows that. All right, is there a plan that shows that yet or not? All right.
The elevation of the parapet is included.
It is, okay, all right. And they all will be behind, I mean, they'll all be screened, so.
And you, we can put that in as a condition.
All rooftop mechanical equipment will be screened, properly screened? We wouldn't want to have this visually pleasing building and then see...
And all this hanging off the side.
And see all this...
Yep, absolutely.
Think of that, I mean, so how much higher would that all be?
You're allowed to do it, technically.
You're allowed to do it at fifty-two, not necessarily at fifty-nine.
Yeah. That's, well, appropriately sized screening.
Yeah, I mean, the renderings we gave you included all the parapets.
All right.
So what you saw as pictures is what's being, it includes the parapets.
Did that, where you were doing the, the calculus, the numbers, it going up the side, did that include?
The numbers didn't go to the very top, they went to the roof membrane, but the picture still shows, shows it all the way up.
Yeah, 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 okay. Condition?
Yeah.
We did, on other decisions, we've done, you know, appearance, I don't know that that applies here, manufacturing.
Oh, yeah, no.
Design.
Yeah, no, I mean, I...
I don't think we want that here.
I like this, I like this building. Yeah, who designed it?
Ross.
All right. It's a nice building, yeah.
I mean, if you want, we could say something...
We make our opinions, you know, if we like to look at the building.
Built substantially, as shown in the renderings, we're fine with that.
No, the, I figured, yeah.
I think it's already in there, but I think I'd like to light it. It's a tall building, so it can cause, there's a risk of dark spots. And I, I would be, I'd want you to position your lighting to make sure that there are not...
Yeah, we didn't really go over...
We didn't go into a lot of lighting, and so I don't know how to be specific with that, but...
For the planning board, we had to develop a Florida member plan, so that has all been taken into consideration.
Already? Okay.
Just one comment on the, I mentioned before, the town owns sliver there, and not that I, I'm not inclined to make this a condition or anything like that, but it strikes me as that's sort of the gateway to your project, when you come under the, under the train tracks there, and that's your, the first opportunity to really take it all in. And I'd hate to see that sliver that's not under your control be, you know, that should be a really beautiful, like, framing of a building, I think. So I don't know if in the, if it's come up, or in the context of the land swap, the land that you're planning to donate to the town, if you might consider, you know, a swamp essentially, such that you would have control of that area, then you could maintain it as you like, but that might be more complicated than it, than it sounds.
That is, that is a lot of work you just proposed. I don't necessarily, necessarily think we're against it, but that is totally the board of the selectmen's purview.
Right.
And at no point has anyone offered anything for us giving land, and I would prefer not to go down that rabbit hole.
That's why I'm not inclined, but I just, I'm not inclined to make it a condition, but I, it was just a thought that...
Yeah, so it was some, yeah, what that ended up being at the end of the day.
Well, I mean, your interest is that that maintain, that's being maintained and groomed and aesthetic.
Well, just, yeah, I mean, you don't want to be fond of this.
So you have more faith that they'll maintain it, then the town will maintain it.
Well, I think they have an incentive to maintain it, to make their product.
I think so, no, right, I was just kidding, I think that I was saying that. Yeah, the town takes it over and they let that overgrown, and that's your, you know, people get off the train and they...
We certainly will work with the DPW. I mean, it's in our best interest for it to look gorgeous, but at the end of the day, it's Bob O'Brien and Bob LeBlanc who get to say, "Yeah, you can do something," or, "Oh, no, this is, this is ours."
It could be so far, so put that as a...
The critical environment.
Of that condition.
I mean, I don't think you can condition, you can condition however you want, let me rephrase that, I would prefer you not condition something that is going to require us somehow to force the town to do something.
Oh, no, yeah, I'm not suggesting that, I just...
No, I see more of conditioning to, that you would work with the town to maintain that space.
It's fine.
That's it? I mean, you know? Well, that's kind of what I, that's kind of what I had in mind, is we've seen it in other places where people take a island or something and maintain it.
If you word it such that we're, we're working with the town, we're absolutely fine with that. I just don't want to be in a position where we're somehow dictating to the town what they need to do.
Yeah, no.
That's all.
Yeah.
Because again, it's in everybody's best interest that that corner look as good as it possibly can.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
So am I.
We'll take Phil at his word.
You want that as a condition?
Uh, Phil at his word?
No, that one I probably don't want as a condition. I imagine that's very appealable, but yeah, we'll, we'll put that in.
So it's something to the effect of work with the town to maintain the landscaping of that.
The piece they're gonna give to the town?
Parcel and the big cross.
Yeah, I'm talking about the piece that's not being turned into the town.
Oh, the piece right in front. Yeah, right in front, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, if they can pay the DPW lot, they certainly, you know...
Again, we have no problem.
I'm really, I'm not worried about them, I mean, figuring out a way to maintain the strip in front of their building.
And we'll also, we'll also, just so you're...